Good evening. Welcome to the Scottsville Town Council meeting for Monday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. My name is Matthew Lawless. I serve as Scottsville's town administrator. This meeting is held in compliance with Virginia's open meeting laws and the State's Freedom of Information Act. Our meeting is open to the public in person at the town office, four oh one Valley Street. Um, we also have opportunities for the public to participate by phone or online on Zoom platform. Um, the posted start time for our meeting is seven o'clock. We'll come to order in just a moment. Um, if you're going to the meeting in uh the future on our YouTube channel, thank you very much. Um, this will be the video start of the meeting in just a moment. Thank you.
All rolled. Alex Bessa, Crisco here, Parenthood Tines.
Here.
Bill Hyson.
Here.
Alan Morse.
Here.
Anything?
Here.
Ross Mc. Then I would ask everyone to stand where it's likely.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Same calendar includes approval of this agenda, approval of minutes from February twenty-first and special law meeting on February twenty-seventh. Approval of the financial report for February, yes, and the regional hazard litigation plan update. Their motion due to accept the consent calendar.
Can we have discussion before the motion, sir?
Would you like me to?
I would like to to add a discussion on the charter committees and also the applicant relationship to closure.
And so just tell him, Mr. Ice, and I'm working on committees, which is, and I've just been handed another change where Meredith is now uh in a position where she may not be able to do the proper job on uh education. And there's a lot of ifs here. I would prefer if we could hold down all the next work sessions.
I think we did. We just discussed last work session to discuss at this meeting.
We started and it didn't seem to work out too well towards the end.
So we so we say we would discuss at this meeting.
Well, I would like to move to next meeting, to the work session for next month. So there's there's a lot of different things going on right now with committees. And.
Well, yes, and that's why, you know, I think council should be a part of it.
And that's why we should do it on the work session.
And we could not do it on the work session.
That would do it on our next one.
Well, see, that's that's postponement of and was one of the problems we've had in this town, you know, for the last few years, things get postponed. Say, why can't we took a few minutes to talk about it?
If you just want to talk about it and not make any assignments or any divisions from.
Well, no, no, I'm not saying that. It may come up in the discussion, sir.
Anything that deals with committee members basically is something that has to be handled under a closed session.
No, sir. According according to the charter and the code of Scottsville, it can be discussed.
Well, I'm asking your inhabitants just at one time. You're the one that came in and said, oh, uh, Soderin came in at the last minute and added something and we went through all that.
And that was backed up. It was backed up by. It was backed up by Italian attorney, correct? It was backed up by Italian attorney.
Wrong times if you come in lately on a day, night of the meeting and want to add something to the agenda when you pad the agenda for several days, you could have added it earlier. All you had to do is call Max and say, can we have this on the agenda?
I've I've made the request in the past and it hasn't been done. Also, you know, I don't know whose house, you know, whose problem it was. I never got a copy of the last minutes.
Is there an urgency to discuss it tonight?
Well, you you had to meet Nolly. What do you think? We had a workshop. We were going to discuss again and we didn't.
I understand there. There are a lot of things going on right now, and I I would say that I put some thought into this, and I think it may be a broader topic than what we had originally talked about. Personally, without any discussion, I would find it hard to make any decision tonight. Um, I'd like to propose that we do wait a little bit and that we take that broader context. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you, you know, if we might work together on some of the broader process issues that I'm thinking about. I'm not thinking at all about assignments, but it's a broader context discussion. Could it wait if if I work with the mayor to get some pre-work done before then? Or do you feel that there's an urgency? I'm just asking the question.
All I'm asking, mayor, council and staff is for responsibility, accountability and transparency. And, you know, it's ebb and flow for a while. Uh, personally, um, in my review of the documents that I've had access to, um, I don't see, um, for example, um, anything in that town charter that defines a strong mayor, weak mayor form of government. I don't see in the terms of where everything else is defined, what they define chief executive officer. I don't even see town administrator or town manager uh mentioned in either document. So, you know, we've got a lot of revisions to do, and how can we? How can we say, I'm gonna do this, we're gonna do that? Well, we don't know who the responsibility is. That's the only point I'm trying to make.
That's the.
And in fact, you know, I will take, you know, perception, uh, as much work as uh as Mayor Ron Smith does, um, I don't think it's his, you know, responsibility to set up committees. Show me. Show me where it is. That's all I ask.
I will get to look out after the meeting if you agree to go.
Well, well, the attorney said.
Agree to make this discussion next work session.
Well, let me put it this way, um, can I make a um uh, a statement now that I definitely want to see this on the next town council agenda?
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Absolutely.
We'll talk about it in the work session and we'll place it on the next agenda.
Okay, that's the charter provisions.
And I think we need some pre-work ahead of that, so I'd like to to work through that with some of you potentially.
Yeah, we got Meredith now has conflict and it's following her duties. Um, several of you have asked me to to do something different, that you like to do something different than what you're doing. And I've just been working on that, and I don't have it in a position. I'm not in a position to like to address it competently. So if we can wait until next work session, it'd be a great great uh deal of your being easy to work with.
And also, can I make a suggestion for the next workshop?
Yes, sir.
Is that every elected appointed job in this town be defined as per the code of Virginia, the code of Scottsville, the charter committee? I've seen a lot of vagueness there.
Okay.
How do we know who's supposed to be doing what when it's not even defined?
Well, there are definitions in the code book, so.
And yeah, I read them over today. I spent a lot of time with them today, and that's why I'm making this statement.
All right. Well, it's in the official minutes. The next work session, we'll start this discussion, and we'll be on the agenda for next council.
Right out of the beginning of the list.
Right after. Yeah, we might have to do a couple of things for that. We'll be on the agenda.
Prepare for a long session.
And have got the disclosures.
So, thank you, Mr. Payne.
I mean, well, that was number one, but you have the disclosure. I mean, basically what it says, you know, if uh to give an example, if a developer comes into town and I'm invested in the National Bank of Columbia, and they are the ones backing these people. I have to say, I have an investment. I either have to re-lose myself from any type of discussions. You know, just just saying, hey, I don't know these guys. Can we, you know?
Well, that's that's part of the conflict of interest. I just took the training today. That's part of the conflict of interest training. Right? That every one of us is supposed to disclose any kind of interest.
But we have nothing. We only have in the ordinance where it says a town official you know, has to, you know, say, I have no financial interest in anything that's going on.
Well, let's do this. We'll bring it up at work session. We'll have everybody will have a code book in front of them. Read it, what it says, and we'll discuss how it needs to be changed. Okay, is that okay? So with that being said, can we have a?
No, I I got the agenda item two, which I'd like to uh propose, and I did submit this last week, and I gave it to them, and I I sent it to everybody. Uh, but about a closed session about personnel. Um, if we want to do that openly, that would be fine, and your mayor support and and they got a committee person here. But I would like to know the procedure, the policy and the timeline for hiring. Uh, and I don't think we could wait till next month. We I think they opened the resumes uh and applicants in in a couple of days. And I think we need to get hopping on uh interviews and decision and not wait for next month because of what I understand, we got until the to give a couple, some overlap. We need to have it done by April.
Like we mentioned last week, when the vetting committee has their list of of candidates in the order they think they should probably be listed. They will turn them over to you and you can schedule your interviews.
Who who? Me?
You, your committee is in charge.
No, 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 we're not in charge. It's the town council. The whole town council should be part of it. The whole town.
The whole council.
Yeah, it's not. It's not a committee like that. This is.
Maybe I can do a briefing.
Yeah, maybe.
I can tell where we are and sort of the approach that we're taking.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
That would be good because uh I think we we really need to to get the timeline on that and get moving on that, and and I'd like to. I'd like to have somebody in place by mid-April.
Well.
Latest.
Right, and I don't disagree.
And we don't meet till end of it. Or middle.
We set that.
So maybe do that with the mayor's report or your report.
Yeah, we I I can report out where we are and where we're going.
And also, what's the what's procedure and how we're gonna do this?
Yes.
That would be good. I mean, I thought we could do it closely. If you want to do openly, that's fine.
And then.
You can do it in the open as long as we're not talking about individuals.
We're not talking about candidates.
No.
At all. It's way too premature.
I just. It's just about.
And I will explain where we are in the process.
And procedure and timeline and timeline. Yeah. Yeah, we don't even know who's out there yet.
Yes, sir. I'm happy to report on that, and it.
That would be good.
One thing I would. I have questions on item D, so I I had asked if we could split that out of the consent agenda and so that I can ask my, hopefully they're just brief questions, and then we can move on.
Breath sixty.
I'm sorry.
Move that to uh discussion sixty.
Yes.
And when will you be doing your thing with the personnel?
What do you mean?
What?
My briefing will be six.
Six?
D or E.
Okay, okay, okay. So we've added to the D. Okay, so open session.
It's very brief. It won't take long.
Well, there's be questions.
And I'll happy to answer them to the degree I can.
You're saying you want to treat the regional hazmat mitigation plan update as a separate thing?
Yes, sir, because I have a a couple of questions. I can't. I can't vote with good conscience unless I have unless I ask these questions.
Okay, why don't you put that? Where do you want to put that on with us?
Six sixty would be fine after.
Sixty, there's one little question at sixty.
Okay.
Okay. So is anybody willing at this point in time to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items A, B, and C? I don't know. I don't think we second to move the segment all in favor.
Hi.
All right, that took a long time. Uh, public forum. If you want to speak with us now.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, good evening. Um, just real quick, the main thing, of course, we're working on is the budget. We have another budget meeting meeting scheduled this Wednesday, the twenty-second, next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. We have a tentative date for April twelfth if we need another budget work session. Uh, the public hearing for the budget will be on uh at six o'clock on the twenty-sixth of April, and then the board will vote on the budget on the third of May. Um, you know, unlike most of the things that come before us where it's, you know, one night, we do all of the information, the public hearing. This is about a two-month process. Um, I'll tell you the challenges that we're facing as a county. Um, the first one is, of course, we're looking at the rapid increase of assessment values over the last two years. Uh, eight point twelve percent last year, thirteen point five percent this year. That's the average. Some some people have seen their assessments go up substantially more, others a little less. Um, every penny on the tax rate is worth two point seven million dollars. So if we were to keep what's called the effective tax rate, which is taking the the increased assessments and lowering the tax rate from eighty-five point four cents, we would have to lower it to seventy-five point three cents in order to for everyone to, on average, to receive the same tax bill this year that they had last year. That would be twenty-seven million dollars that the budget would be reduced. Last year alone, on capital improvement plan, the CIP increased in cost by thirty-eight million dollars for the stuff we've already approved, which would be things like two new elementary schools, one in the southern feeder pattern, one in the northern, and a new high school center. So the challenge we have is trying to find a way to reduce the tax burden, yet still be able to achieve those things that the CIP we've already approved. Um, already, the proposed budget basically takes sixteen million dollars out of operations and moves it into the CIP, which means we're reducing operations by that sixteen million dollars, and our budget is about thirty, thirty-five million less than it was last year because we've lost all the federal funding that we had come to rely on from cares in our. So we have some real challenges on trying to reduce the tax rate. The one thing that we that is being proposed is to maintain the personal property tax rate at the same amount it was last year, which was reduced eighty-four cents over what the previous twenty-year rate had been. Last year, we reduced it because used car prices had gone through the roof. This year, they've they've come down a bit, but they're still above what they've been before. So that's our challenge. The one thing that I've been asking our public is don't just send us an email that says lower the tax rate. You know, we need to know what don't you want? Do you not want schools? Do you not want biscuit run park? You know, you you because just to say lower the tax rate doesn't really help us. We need specifics, and um thus far, we haven't gotten a lot of specifics, but that's basically the message I've been trying to get at. So that's our the big thing we're working on, and thank you, Mayor, councilors. Um, if there are any questions you have for me, Council Payne.
Yes, six thirty. Can you tell us about Thursday night?
Oh, the uh the town hall. Right. Well, that'll be one of the. It's actually the first of the town halls. There will be three town halls. Um, there'll be two uh magisterial districts combined. This one will be the Samuel Miller and the Scottsville District. Um, Jim Andrews, the supervisor from the Samuel Miller District, myself will be there along with Deb Walker, deputy county executive, and several other staff members, where it'll be an opportunity to have a a brief presentation by staff on some of the major budget items and then Q and As by the uh community members. So Supervisor Andrews and I will be there for that. Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Are there any uh?
The Council.
Let us know. Maybe you can let us know if there's any kind of uh issues around the southern uh southern Alamo or Scottsville that pertain to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know there's it's a huge budget and it goes all over the place, but I mean, if there's something specifically.
One specific idea is additional funding by the county to the library system to change a part-time employee position to a full-time employee position.
That's good enough. Yeah, right.
And then the other thing, of course, is the funding of the Southern feeder pattern. You know, Mountain View is way over overmanning. The actual um uh in improvements that are currently underway will only cover the anticipated increased enrollment above the overcapacity they're already at. So we have to build a new school in the southern part of the county, and uh in Mountain View is the number one school we need.
Another elementary school?
Yes, another elementary.
You don't know where that's gonna be yet.
Not yet. Don't have that location yet.
That's good.
Uh, and and ultimately, that'll be a decision. The location will be a decision by the school board. The funding, of course, comes from the board supervisors since we're the only elected body in the county with taxing board. And that is on top of the eleven point eight million that went into Scottsville just a couple of years. So we are, we have some big education improvements in the southern.
Great, great.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the audience who wish to speak or want anything? Close the public forum and the only thing I need to um add to what I told you, I've done in the at the workshop meeting, we had a really good meeting this morning. Uh, the principal up at the Scottville Elementary. We gathered together about appointee, I guess we could be called, we could be leaders in the, you know, area. And we all got to get to just meet each other, call each other by the name of, I don't know, I went to help one another, uh, I went to the uh the town of school. We had uh Mr. Burke from uh the inner queue counter, we had done uh, this way from the health department, uh, Chief was there, uh, Graham Page from school board, uh, Mary Bova from the animal rescue, they're all in love. And a number of uh people that I think I know, we all all bring up the same page that uh we volunteer and we want to keep everything going, and school certainly use uh mobile here and uh with our communities here, we use volunteer too. So it was very productive meeting. That's all I had. Vice Mayor Payne, you have anything to add?
Mr. Mayor, you've been present. That acted in your absence. I have no report.
Well, thank you anyhow. Um, let's go with the committee reports now. We can start on the end, and like I said before, the the general response for charter committees, we have committees not like charter committees, so we start with events, ARB.
ARB was a pretty productive meeting, levels of chair, Aaron, whenever it was to uh view our oversight in the town, um, I kind of enjoy my time there so far, and we're doing that, and couple places in town all the route that have been replaced for these, you know, there's several sites working for that, loans are standing, they had a roof, and that is for you, barn style, very own property. Uh, we gave the owner the choice of doing some small pathing that are ten by six, was on the back of the wing. And the other one was just a paint color thing. And as far as events go, um, we're ramping up. We got to get with Matt soon. I noticed there's been some interest in the different musicians wanting to play and stuff like that. Hopefully, it's a good event. Fourth of July for this.
Okay, and uh they had at the PTO, Scott School mentioned this morning that they're planning a uh five K run sometime this spring, all in April, uh, so they might want to check it for, uh, check it, sure, okay, see how we can be a help with this thing. That works. All right. Uh, Chris, do anything on the planning commission?
Yeah, there were two meetings, Mr. Mayor. One was a meeting where it was a special meeting for the planning commission that talked about the comprehensive plan. In that meeting, there was a lot of discussion about different sections. It's gonna be a long process. To those out there in the public, the planning commission will be very interested in input from systems on all the different sections that I've definitely gone over. The the comprehensive plan is reviewed every, is it five years now? Every five years? And in that process, this new review takes a long time, and we appreciate, though, people that are interested, there will be some publicity, and so the various ways that the planning commission will work for, and what the planning commission will also dialogue with the town council to get input in that process. The other meeting, the main meeting of the planning commission dealt with a presentation by Soder, and now I was gonna ask you to address that, to think that I wasn't there for that meeting, but.
Yes, sir. It's the um byright uh development plan, the preliminary subdivision for their um holdings comprising multiple parcels, about a hundred and fifty acres in total on the Blenheim and Alavanas brands area going around Pine and Holly Street all the way down to the border with the Vanquish Nature Area. It's partially zoned um village residential and partially zoned rural areas. The byright uh unit count on that site is between forty-five and fifty-five, depending how they're laid out. Um, and the constraints of topography, the steep slopes and streams on site, um, their plan shows the lower end of that site, forty-five homes, being about acre and a half lots on the village residential portion and as large as ten, fifteen acres on the rural areas portion. That's byright development again. Uh, so planning commission just reviews the technical content of the plan, the width of the streets, the location of the utility lines, the size of lots and that sort of thing. And the property owner is allowed to subdivide and build. Um, there's no information about the timeframe of construction, and we certainly wonder about economic news, but planning commission is going through its um due diligence on the subdivision review. It's certainly a topic of great interest to the neighbors, and there is some required public outreach, so um all of the adjoining property owners to that large site, which is a large number of neighbors, um, got letters in the mail notifying them that the plans are here and available for inspection. But this uh the byright development does not require any town council action.
Okay. This time.
Uh, and Mayor, I have a big, uh, story.
I know at every point, you know, you're going to go to the other side of the street.
It's about it. Uh. If they want to take that out, yeah, the butterfly garden is gonna be a big, a big project. Um.
If I'm not touching there about the creek, you know, I mean, we could offer, I guess, is is it our property or belongs to?
Yes, sir. We thought of a lot of the, we saw the result. We have the parking lot and the butterfly garden. The the Mason's lot was minimal to just the footprint of the building.
The uh power washing benches, that's gonna be in the Boys and Girls Club, I'm sure it's on the way, and then the the next big thing will be next month, the uh birthday.
All right. Why don't you uh send me a list of things that need to be done, and obviously to honor it, but let's give the, 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 so. Uh, Mr. Ice? Want to report on anything?
Well, I wasn't at the one government service meeting, but uh we don't, we we're dealing with and still are dealing with the parking in the town, painting the yellow lines. We've got someone who painted and uh need a lot more to do where the where people are gonna be parking, so we're working on that. Um, and then uh we finally selected, I'm gonna let Eileen talk a little bit about this, but we selected a a a web designer, which is really exciting. We we weeded those out, and I think we have seven or eight, and we've looked at three of them last week. And the one we selected was Civic Civic Plus, uh, and it costs five thousand dollars and three nine hundred a year, and they are very. Uh and it costs five thousand dollars and three nine hundred a year and they are very professional. And they gave a great presentation, so it's really exciting, it's, we're gonna have a, a, a really huge uh addition to the town with this website, with it's the interactive and searching and uh it's, it looks really good, but maybe, uh Eileen, maybe you could uh she, she, the process was just remarkable, and I think uh I'd like to recognize her for what she did with it, maybe you could explain a little bit more about it.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, as, as Counselor Heissen said, uh we had uh six vendors respond in a competitive process. An RFP competition. Through a predefined set of criteria, we were able to whittle that down to three. We interviewed the three in person for an hour, half hour for demo and a half hour for Q and A. Based on that, it was felt unanimous by the um six reviewers who attended uh that Civic Plus formerly Munich Code, who currently is working on doing our ordinances online. That they were the most uh prepared and most tailored for our application. They were uh the most cost-effective, they provided the most comprehensive solution for the town. They've experienced designing webpages for many municipalities, which I think really put them ahead in the running. Um, they have an easy-to-use site design templates, which will make the staff job of updating pages much easier, we think. And they appear to um have just a simpler, overall cleaner design for us, so we will go through the next process. This is, I'll remind everybody, a budgeted, currently in the budget. It's been approved by the council already, so I don't think there's any further approval that's required. Um, it's our recommendation that this vendor then be approved and that the project move forward to the implementation phase. There were a couple of lessons learned from the uh competitive RFP process. Um, the process does take a little bit longer. Um, but the initial, and the initial phase to review, to cut that six down to three was um it could have been streamlined, so I would take that on myself because I put the process together. It does require the full attention and participation of all of the reviewers who are selected for the team. Um, and then a couple of thoughts on the future efforts. While the process did take longer, it was completely transparent, everybody felt very good about where we ended up. I think we have a good solution for the town, the best one that I think we could have gotten. Um, the vendor selection choice was clear, the reasons for selection were uniformly agreed upon, so if you came to anyone on the review team, they could tell you the same reasons about why it was chosen. So if we were to get stopped in the street by someone, we could say, hey, this is what we did, this was the process, this is why we chose this vendor, and I think that's very powerful. Um, and then the only other thing that from my personal standpoint that I would recommend is that this process of vendor selection through a competitive process. We should consider this for all future town purpose uh purchases above a certain dollar threshold. We wouldn't want to do it for small purchases, but I think we could perhaps agree on a threshold and say anything above there we could do through a competitive process. And I think that would uh really benefit the town and benefit everyone up here when we have to answer questions to the community at large.
And I think, you know, I always talk about that, having the idea of picking the most that we want to use for that, you know, so it's like a little thing and so obviously that's.
Right, so splitting the budgetary from operational decisions to as Counselor Price was saying, the capital improvement plan with grants that we get and things like that, so it would be discretionary spending, not operational spending. So that, that was about it. I think everybody felt good about where we ended up.
Thank you, well. Pain, vice mayor Payne, you got anything else to add or anything with uh public safety or any thing that you're involved in?
Uh, still meet with uh uh Chief Jenkins uh at least every Monday, sometimes twice a week. And uh we do have discussions, he hasn't um given me anything to bring to council. Council hasn't given me anything to take to him. Informal discussions. He, he has a very good workshop presentation, uh and when available, town council presentation, so anything I would say, uh he could do it a whole lot better. Um, I don't know if it's public safety, it might be public sanitation. Um, I'm not sure when the the two public restrooms were opened up. I'm guessing within the last week or so, um, uh housekeeping has taken care of both of them. And um I, this time of year, I take it upon myself to inspect them every day. And uh so they made it through the weekend pretty good. However, um, three to four months ago, probably second or third time, the electric light at the farmers market restroom stays on. One of the toilets in the ladies room, it's not working, has not worked, leaking water, safety hazard. The men's urinal I checked it this morning, I expect it was frozen, but it wouldn't flush. They're clean, but uh well, until you get to the porcelain port.
Vice Mayor Payne, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I mentioned in our last conversation about maybe doing something with the council, thanking the volunteers at the uh the volunteer hours of people that would be, that have done so much for the for public safety, and I just wanted to ask you, do you think that's a helpful idea, that's something you wanna think about, or should we talk about it as a council? That's not any question to do, it's something I brought up last week and the idea was to simply thanking the many, uh Chief Jenkins has gotten enormous amounts of volunteer hours and just so maybe we had some kind of proclamation or something to thank, and so I just swear that to you, thanks for your committee, that's a good idea or not?
Yeah, he's wide open and of course I think we all are for some type of recognition. Uh, wishing it was financial, we can't afford it, but um some, some type of certificate or something would, would be nice. I'm, I'm sure they'd all appreciate it and they do put in a lot of hours and save the town a lot of money, especially when it comes to the IT portion. Um, and the, the software updates and, and the the rapport they have with uh ACFR uh with the, the the way they operate together, so um we're saving a whole lot of money, we're getting a, a lot of, a lot of volunteer labor these guys and, yeah, they'll, they'd be wide open to that. I think we should.
Thanks so much. All right. Moving on to item six. Yeah, you want to open up this budget, Stephen?
Um, certainly, sir. Uh, you have um, you have before you the latest draft of the town budget for the next year. Reflecting your discussion from last week's work session. Um, with my apologies for any errors lost in translation as uh I was not present at that work session, but um you, you've had a, a pretty clear to-do list to get this to final update. Um, so this is your recommended budget from the staff that we believe meets your goals and the sense of the body at this point in the year. As um Supervisor Price described, we have similar legal obligations to adopt the budget before June thirtieth. So a target for that may be a public hearing at your April meeting and then revision and adoption in May, and then if there's anything that um sticks or requires some special meetings, you have um four or five weeks, get in close with the human if necessary. The um substantial changes uh in this budget are uh the preservation of the DMV Select Service at one position instead of two. Uh, that's made possible with um, um meals tax increase up to six point five percent. Uh, which remains lower than some here tourist communities like Gordonsville and Farmville and puts us in line with Charlottesville. Uh, so you, you might hope that the um, you know, impact to local tourism would be uh modest in order to deserve those services. Uh, the town does not use the real estate tax, so as Supervisor Price described, that impact of um changing assessments and the stress and debate around that tax rate, that's not something the town is presenting. Those real estate funds support the county services, schools, fire, rescue parks, uh as you described so well. This budget focuses on business-based taxes. So on page two with the revenues, you see some estimates related to business license, bank franchise, meals tax. We have good conservative estimates, um without much growth over this current year. That's a recession forecast, um with um uh, you know, not much economic growth forecast in the next year. We hope that that recession is mild and short, uh but it's very hard to predict. So on the revenue side, this budget is pretty conservative. And in the result of your, you know, several meetings, you had a discussion around, you know, how far should we tighten our belts? And you saw the, the staff pay raises drop from six percent to two percent, reducing the capital spend. Um, while preserving a few key priorities for repairs to parts, um. But uh the police fleet is in good shape, don't need to buy another car in the next year, uh and uh we're, we're belt tightening and everything from uh office supplies to um long-range finance support, the comprehensive plan effort that Mr. Grisco described with the planning commission is done without a lot of expensive involvement help. Uh, so this, I feel represents a solid balance between what the local business community can support and how the town council can meet the priorities that are most important to you. Although it does not do everything that we might want, I think it does look important to me. So uh the action item, uh if you're ready, is to put this recommended budget out to public hearing. We'll advertise the total spend here, which is eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, thirty-one percent less than what we're operating with in the current year. That's the impact of the reduced federal funding and the recession that we're going into. You advertise that total spend and those tax rates. Um, going forward in the budget process, you're free to make further reductions and adopt lower tax rates and the lower spend. But you cannot adopt higher tax rates or a higher total spend than what's shown in here. So it's a little bit like the Frankenstein, you come down, but you can't go over. Uh, so if um, if this feels to you like the largest budget that you might be comfortable adopting, we can go ahead and advertise it. If, if it feels like more growth might be in the cards, then maybe we put this off and discuss the tax rates and the economic forecast.
Questions for Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, uh this is the first I heard that we were gonna keep the DMV because we had talked about uh not doing that, but I mean, it'd be great if we could do that, but I think we need to really uh look at the numbers and see if it's feasible, we lost a hundred thousand, whatever. If, if we keep one employee and we're not managing it, we're still gonna be losing money, so I, I, I think we need to really see what we can do if that's feasible to do that. One employee, that means if they're sick or they go to lunch or they uh whatever, that means it's not open and we don't make any money, so I think that needs to really be looked at because uh the DMV has been on, we, with the government service, we brought that back, back up last fall and that was just a, a losing venture. And even though it's a great service to the community, uh, I don't know if we should continue to be taking a loss or unless we really have a real business plan to make it work. But anyway, that, that's what I, I, that's what I thought we had uh decided on doing it. That was, that was what we talked about.
I've gotten more emails and comments from people on the street, please don't get rid of the DMV. And what you got before you here is basically a balanced budget keeping DMV. So you drop the DMV, all of a sudden you're fifty thousand dollars on the plus side. Rather than the balance.
Uh, yes, sir, you could uh, if, if you were to remove that service, it would put you into surplus. And you could spend on other things that you thought were a better value or reduce taxes.
Yeah, I, I'd rather do that.
But do we have to make this decision now? What you're asking us is just to put this forward for public consideration and we can take these questions later, correct?
That's right.
This, this, the mayor, you know, at the workshop we had, I, I made basically the same statement, and if you remember, you told me that the DMV was not in the budget.
Uh, cause in that version.
In that version of the budget.
This version of the budget passed in.
And basically this bu, this bu, uh, this version, too many Bs, this version just cuts out one employee.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so does DMV mandate that you have to have a supervisor and an employee?
It, it requires quite a number of double check on everything.
Who's gonna do those?
Two stimulations on that, we, we've been able to do that. Just the, you know.
So why do we have a supervisor if you all could do it?
Two people provides the redundancy as Mr. Heissen described, you know, cover if one person's sick, specialize in the training. But if, if all we need to do is um tally the count at the end of the day, I can support that. I'm, I'm not qualified to step in. I think if we had one DMV employee and they were sick, we would need to close.
That's what's happened regularly, I mean, not regularly, often I have the two employees out, it happened last week and then somebody was sick.
Yes, sir, if, if two people have family problems, that's how it's happening down.
That's, that's a problem.
Point, just to follow up with my fellow town council, so correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor or Mr. Ball, that one way to keep us is to adjust it before it goes to the public, in other words, so we as a council say, hey, thank you, but we wanna get rid of the DMV, so that could be taken off, so in other words, that could be a conversation that we had before this went to the public. The other way to do it is to say there's a fair amount of people who want to keep it, let's put it on there. I'm not saying which one is the right way at the moment. But there's legitimate, so I'm hearing a number of you say you have concern having it in here, so I think it is a worthwhile conversation, so the question would be on that issue, would we want to or not want to talk about it further before we put this out there, or do we wanna not do that, so it's a legitimate issue?
But you know, if, if we could just break even, I would consider that. Um, basically because the public service, you know, a lot of people, they want it. And it's the convenience, I've used it too. Um, so yeah, break it, it's like income tax, if you break even, hey, you've done good, you know? Um, but at, at the same time, we, we can't afford to spend fifty-eight thousand dollars to make it convenient for the community, I don't think. Um, and if you need one employee, you need to, if you need one car, you need to. Someone breaks down at once.
I wonder if we could get somebody from DMV to come here and, and actually we could talk to them, have a conversation and say like, here's there's a dilemma, we like to do it, could, how can you, we help, you help us or we help you? Marketing it, uh having substituted their uh, their sick, so would continue, but uh I think, I can't, I mean, we can't, we can't manage the DMV, obviously we can't manage it.
If you remember, you know, we, we were talking about maybe negotiating with DMV, DMV Select to see if they would absorb some of the.
Yeah.
And is that in their model? I don't think it is.
I feel like when we talk about that, that's not something.
Well, we don't know, we haven't asked.
No, I feel like didn't we know for certain?
No. I don't think we did do it, Matthew.
They wouldn't change their model on like the rates of what they would get from the transaction versus what we net from the transaction, is that negotiable at all?
It's, it's defined in state law and it has not changed in
Yeah, so you're right.
Yeah. Yeah, so that is fixed. Yes, okay, no, that's fine, that's, that was my understanding too.
Yeah, and I know you addressed this, that not this past work session, but the one before, but please refresh my memory. What was our income in dispatch here with the DMV?
You have um I think we're gonna land at twenty-five thousand dollars this year. And I can, I can only give a small increase to that, it's hard to say that, you know, it'll be better known and more people will come, that marketing can continue, but it's hard for me to say that one person's gonna do exactly the same work, work as what the people did.
Yeah, I mean, I started to read that, you know.
I, I still, I still have a paying less than half a car.
Man, I have a question here. Just your opinion. Does one person operating in the DMV have the capacity to make it unknown there to be a limit?
We if, if, if they had, if they had a line, like what you do with your Thomas Faulkner, if they had a line like what you did at the main DMV. That would get you the transaction count. When we first ran these numbers, when we first had the idea, we ran the numbers on it being pretty solidly full. And it has not been pretty solidly full. So if an hour goes by and no one comes in, we paid an hour's wages and not made anything. And it's, I I. I wanna try to, I wanna find other things for that important to do. And have done that, you know, here's some, here's some mailing support, um, office support, financial support, because we have a a former banking employee on payroll. So help with these bank statements. Um, so we can do some of that. And and maybe one way to think about this is, even if the position moves its money. Um, maybe they can provide some admin support and help us get other things done. Uh, police admin, you know, re- reports, I T work. Um, it might be nice to have another general on that. But um, it's hard for me to say with two years of um. With two years of financial records here that, you know. The ones we looked at as comps were closer to twenty nine, we're just never gonna have the traffic count on there. We like it that way.
And that fifty eight thousand, what is that? That salary of the explain.
Salary benefits and an office overhead. It's it's mostly personnel cost, but you've got a a phone line equipment. Bank, bank fees, postage.
The other thing to say about it, in the, do we drop it? Do we keep it in terms of a proposed budget is, one way or the other, we do want public feedback to say. Don't want it, you don't want it, here's the price either way. On the outside, if you have it in there, you can always drop down. If it's out of it. We, if it's much more difficult to put it back in, because now we advertise and not have it in there. So again, I'm. I think there's a case, but it's a difficult question either way.
It's gonna get thirty three thousand dollar loss if you drop it. Yeah, to one person.
When you kind of look at the overall picture, yeah, that's picking those, looking at a big company, that particular department in that company, they had a losing year. But overall, the company balanced the budget, just the balance budget. So you can't just focus in on one area. So I may be a concern. There's Dan said.
I I understand how that spending works. All I'm saying is that, you know, when we. Voted to not put in the apartments, all we heard was. You're costing us all of this money. Figure out a way to make up that money that we don't need. Just go look at all this money where you can have that. I'm just looking at a way to, 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 so money. You know, everybody wanted to know where we were gonna get the money down. Here's. You know, thirty eight thousand dollars.
If we were thirty eight thousand dollars on the minus side of balancing the budget, sure. deletion to bring it back into the balance budget, but even that in there and having a budget balanced. Is not like you're losing anything. You got it worked out so you can have a balanced budget.
I I, like I said, I understand how that is. I understand that it's balanced. I understand that it's balanced with the D M B event. But. I, you know, we may look through some of these things and say. There are other places. Where, you know, where we can up our spending on on something.
Well, I I see a couple right away that really uh. You know, we have no money for Van Cleve and Van Cleve Park and we have. Five thousand, but uh. One thousand for Canal Basin Square and that's our tourist attraction. If we have put one thousand up, you could do that with the water faucet, the bathrooms, the uh. The batonies.
Peter, not to, this is just, just the top request, any revenue from the new title.
Right.
From the new writing store, or from the bake shop, or anything else in my home.
No, that's a good point. That's a good point.
Right, I'm just talking about expenditures.
But yeah, but like.
If you get half of the good fiscal year and you find you're having a little big problem, you close the D M B.
Can we do that with six, what, six months? We don't have to do a year today?
Yeah, your um appropriation of language allows for proportional cutbacks. If our, if 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 this recession were much more severe than, you know, bank failures, right?
So we're not locked into a year like we did with this year. This year we're locked until what, June?
Because the the revenues have been on track.
Okay.
But i- if the, if the revenues are trending down, we can make proportional cuts.
But that's only if the revenue's trending down.
Yes.
From the D M Vs.
Not for, not for performance reasons.
Right.
But uh, at the.
You can't arbitrarily.
Yes, we commit to the D M B that we're gonna provide the service.
So we started in August, year before last, you know, August.
We'll get the renewal paperwork from them pretty soon.
And so it renewed.
I I think it goes July first to July. And they're, and they're aware we're having this.
Well, is it worthwhile leaving it in for the public posting and then bringing up this and the trade offs with the community at the public hearing?
Yeah.
And there have been a lot of comments that think it's a worthy public service for the, for the community.
And that's what we're gonna discuss.
Yeah.
Can I tell you what the, 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 the internet and the services D M B provides there, it's very little. You can't do in your living room.
Yeah, that's the thing.
I mean, I I I got a feeling that, you know.
It would be different.
Well, I think at office like this, it's kind of go, gonna go the way of a paper.
Could be.
Four or five people in lines there.
Yeah, but Ron, I come up, I'm gonna deal all hours of the day and it's four or five hours, nobody comes by. I mean.
Our computer Saturday will come here and they will come here because they don't wanna drive to the pantry.
One of the things I'm excited about, hearing the good news about the librarian, that full time position, it it works as a public computer lab. And the librarians help people with things like D M B transactions or. Social services applications where it it can be done conveniently on a computer, but sometimes the library staff helps you with it.
Really, what we, what we need is, and what Matt has alluded to. Is we need somebody that can handle the desk on the other side, but can handle the counter on the other side of the wall too. And if we've got a D M B employee in the bay and she's sitting there waiting for the phone to ring or somebody to walk up. She can be sent next door to check something or come up or do some research.
That they're not.
And not going to ask to do that. What we're saying is that's gonna be for a new job. They're gonna help out in the office. So you walk in and, oh, Matt's in the conference or whoever the new administrator is, he's looking at Charles Hill. Javier is. Focused on his numbers. And somebody, it it's just good service to have somebody walk up to the counter and say, how can I help you? But we don't have that. Plus answer the telephone. If they, you know, they have, put them a phone in, in the D M B side, we have, when we brush one, that one range, when we brush two. A different button range, what they want.
Well, it also has somebody here to keep the office open all the time, because I have come. And if Javier and uh, Matt are not here, the office was closed one day, right? So if you have somebody here.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're, I see it as a, I see it as one paid employee that's gonna handle two jobs.
And not take lunch.
Wow, we're really tough. You're so tough.
No, no, that is a problem because.
A lot of people don't realize that they are talented employees. You think they do a state employee.
Right, right.
So how do we want to leave this? Do we wanna leave it in? Do we want to and have a public comment? Do we wanna take it out? Well, either way, we do, but we don't have to leave it in to have a public comment.
Can you have two drafts?
I don't know, can you post?
It's, it's the, it's the bottom line stand that matters for this. The uh, the eight hundred and forty one thousand. So you can, you're totally free to rearrange between these categories. So.
Oh.
For example, you know, we advertised the eight forty one. You're within your rights to, you know, delete the fifty eight thousand of D M B select and put that in capital or parks or what have you.
Okay.
As long as those tax rates don't go over and that total spend doesn't go over.
Yeah, it's badly. Nature of the roads, which is nothing.
Yeah.
Uh, design, lands, babies, but acquisition, nothing.
Right.
You know, there, there's a lot of places where we can still keep it a balanced budget. But.
Absolutely. Yep.
Or hope that revenues increase, right? Because if revenues increase, then we can put it on there as well.
Right, but if you, if you see, you know, a a five thousand and a zero and you want them switched, that's easy.
I just don't understand with the federal grants. And and if the COVID money, et cetera, et cetera, all the extra money we had. And the cuts we've made here. How did we, I I understand the first year of D M B, but how did we do so bad the second year? I mean, we're gonna have less money coming in this year. And I realize, you know, Mr. Mayor, you know, and you made a good point and we can. And raw things from other parts of the budget to try to keep this going. Um, we had more money, never had to make cuts, and we're gonna come out now. Uh, am I off base? I don't know.
Are you asking?
I took the algebra four, three times. And I, and I didn't find out, there's only algebra two, so.
Well, clearly, there's some things that have been edited down to accommodate for the preservation of this. Single person D M B, right? And we would have to actually come through the details to find out where those omissions are. I think we probably alluded to some of these already. So uh.
The question would be, do you wish to publish? For a public hearing next month? In April, based on the eight hundred and forty one thousand dollar figure and the new taxes. That's the question.
We could have a public hearing, but you know, then we vote later.
We can change it later.
I mean.
As long as we don't go outside of that spend, right? The eight hundred and forty one thousand, whatever it is.
I think this is a vague topic with the public, so let's get it all happening.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion on that?
Ye- yes, sir, a um, a motion to call the public hearing on April seventh on the recommended budget as presented.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I second.
That's. Chris, yeah.
Yeah.
I said, yes. Uh, Morse?
Yes.
Uh, Paige?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I am six day, I think Matt had told me earlier, when there's Larry, it's all for another month.
Yes, sir, she sends her regrets that she should, could not attend the um, work session last week. And uh, thought it would be fruitful to go over the details of the property. Um, a small but mighty issue at work session next month, so she begged and indulged in that.
That's not something we need to go on, is it?
Could I, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have had a public hearing on this.
Yes.
And we know, do we have a time period where we have to have a?
Planning Commission has deadlines to report things to you, um, but you can defer and debate indefinitely. On on a matter like this, you're under no time pressure. Um, some of these do require several months of back and forth to get it right.
And just for a button, um, town council does not have any public session.
No. Uh, you had your, you had your public hearing, but didn't go into great detail on it.
We had a public hearing about this now, but we own it, if we did, are we in any time strikes thirty, sixty, ninety days?
No, sir, no, sir, it's, it's common to have back and forth with the applicant work on details um, for for months.
Is it legal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I know, you'd be calling, but is it legal? I just wanna. Make sure that, you know, we're doing the right thing.
Yes, yeah. We followed up with all to double check.
So we made it into guy motion on this.
Just defer to defer to next month, that's on.
How many times have we deferred this? This is the second time.
Well, that's at her request.
Yeah, well, still it's been deferred.
And then we defer to next month.
I second.
Okay, upcoming special meeting.
Okay, so we're scheduled for this Saturday at ten for the first of the strategic planning sessions. Um, I will have to get in here Friday to set up. I have boards and projectors and that kind of thing. So um. So if if one of you are here to help, or maybe I can requisition somebody else that can't, can't do it right now. Um, but we did have an issue for the April first. And now you have a a potential, well, you said you were okay.
No, the meeting is something like, stuff like this.
You're okay. Okay, um, and so. Sounds like Grisco, you, you had a conflict for the first. And actually, that's not the best for me. So is, could we move the second session that includes the planning commission? Pass the April first date? Are you're okay with that? Okay, so the, the, yeah, here was the problem, right? If we don't have it on the first. The next weekend is the eighth, which is before, the Saturday before Easter. And then if not, we're into the fifteenth. Any thoughts?
I can't do it at the eight.
You can't do it at the eight, okay.
Can we do it in the evening sometime?
We could do it in the evening. The second one would probably be shorter.
We do a weekday and even?
Mm-hmm, we could.
That we need to look at the dates, it's gonna hard to get the eleven people all on the same page, the same date.
Yeah, we have to check with the chair of the planning commissions too, or planning commission, she should. Yeah, she should be available for that.
Maybe see what they're available and what.
Okay, do you want me to touch base with her and then work back, get a couple of dates from them and then toss them out?
Yeah.
What kind of duration are you looking for for the second session?
Probably four hours.
It's hard to do on a day that's on a weekend.
We could split it into two, two hour sessions. You know, do a Tuesday, Thursday or something like that. Yeah, that would work. Okay, so let's, then let's take the approach where we'll, we will try to do it during the weekday. I'll reach out to the chair to see their availability and get back with the group about um, possibilities. And then we can all try to find a time, but this Saturday is still on. And these are open sessions, oh, excuse me, ma'am. These are open sessions, so anyone is welcome. If anyone from the public wants to join or the planning commission or any of the other committees wanna join and give inputs. This is a great time to do it. It's first session is really all about just inputs. To the town council about strategic planning, so I would encourage anyone who wants to to come and participate. Probably that first session will be no more than two hours.
Here, uh, do you need catering?
We did talk about that, yes, I think that would be nice to have.
Use it in first session, you mean, part one.
Part one, yes. Part one, yes.
Was it yours or?
Goes till, I guess we finish, right? So it'll probably be the bulk of the day. So we had planned for six. Six hours and I'm going to try to rush it through it again. You will be brain drained by the end of the day. So be prepared. There's very few breaks with that kind of pushing all of this stuff into one session. But I think we can get through it and hopefully. I have some exercises, I'm going to keep everybody moving, so it should be. You know, it's not like you're just. Listening to somebody speak, everybody will be engaged, so it should make it a little bit easier.
A motion to call the special meeting in the morning.
I hear a motion to call a special meeting on Saturday morning at ten AM in this chamber.
I saw motion.
Need a voice board or do we all say, uh?
Um, if you could voice vote, we'd be okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Blues. I do, you said. Yeah, Matt, you have to go over the, rather than mitigation plan again.
Certainly, uh. This, um, the regional planning and that's here, um, presented on this last month, but there were, uh, it was a typo and they adopted the resolution. So we sent that back to us promptly, but, um. Happy to, uh, say a little bit more about this document and, and process. I was only, but so much involved with it this time, but I ha- I did see this go through five years ago. Um, and have worked with these before, so if there's questions about what the town is obligated to do or what our role in it is, I'll do my best on that.
Okay. Well, I had a few questions that I don't know if anyone else had, so they went through, uh, looks like they went through a traditional risk assessment. Risk assessment is typically done in terms of probability and severity and it looks like the top three that they indicated for our area are the first one. Hurricane and high wind, windstorms, the second of course would be flooding and the third are winter storms. This is on page ES three, I did not go through the full two hundred and twenty-two pages of this document. But, um, so those were the top three natural hazards indicated in our area, which I think is reasonable. The questions that I have are on ES six on the town and under the town of Scottsville. It has some actions here that we, it looks like we commit to as part of this plan. I do not know if they have, uh, budgetary impact, so I'd just like to go through these three.
Good luck.
The first one, update the town's floodplain maps, I think we've talked about these in, in, in a multiple, uh, different context. So I think if I'm not mistaken, that's sort of already progressing, is that correct?
It is almost done, the draft, the draft maps are at FEMA main office review now. We got a little bit of extra mapping data using, uh, some work planning grants, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing those finally adopted. Uh, but it will be done in the next year and it will not cost us anything.
And they will present that.
Um. I, there will be a presentation, I don't think the FEMA staff will come here from Philadelphia. But, um, when I get the maps, I'll be happy to spotlight a better work session. It's really important to our riverfront property owners.
Yeah, absolutely, and it, you know, it has importance in development and all other kinds of situations. So I would, I would definitely be interested to get the feedback. Okay, so that's being, that's in progress as I had thought. Improve riparian buffers along the parts of Mid Creek and the James River, so what, what does that entail?
Ri- riparian means along the water, um, a, a belt of trees, um, fifty, a hundred, even two hundred feet wide along those water bodies. Absorbs a lot of stormwater and really helps with both water quality and flash flood resiliency. So as we promote that in our development ordinances, you know, don't cut down those trees, don't build houses within a hundred feet. Doesn't cost us anything to enforce those codes which are on books. And where we have park property like the Van Cleef Nature Area, it's already heavily forested, but we should try to reforest it further. And then get the word out to property owners about the value of those. Farmers have a big part to play in this, things like. You know, fencing and planting trees on your fields instead of having cattle come down to the water, but that kind of farmland doesn't really exist in town. So I think we can honor this commitment with a little bit of outreach to property owners, hey, plant a tree near the creek. And, and maybe do a real modest purchase of baby trees and a, you know, an Arbor Day event.
So there could be some kind of communication campaign and a small. You know, planting event, we could probably even coordinate that with something like Earth Day or something like that or Scan, yeah.
Matt, is it just a question, going back to what? JRA did seven or eight years ago along the big grid. Would that count?
It's a great, great example where that used to be. Bottomland with no trees. And the James River Association brought the trees, recruited the volunteers and improved our park at no cost to the town, those are great partnerships.
Right, so who's going to keep track of this action item and how do we report on it?
If you wanted to measure it really carefully, you can aerial survey tree cover. Um, the green infrastructure has done that for Scottsville in the past, so we could, we could ask them to check back on it in a couple of years. But I think, uh, you know, as far as progress funding, you know, keep an eye on your parks budget and set aside a few hundred dollars for a pack of trees. Um, I planted, uh, with some neighbors and family three hundred rotten trees two weekends ago and it took a day.
Mm-hmm.
Easy.
Okay, and then the last one is to improve regional transit for emergency evacuations, prevention and resiliency. Improve regional transit.
We, we obviously do not own regional transit.
Right.
Um, John is our transit partner in rural areas, that buses don't run down here.
Right.
Um. We are not the decider on John's service area. But the stronger those public transportation assets are, it has an everyday value for commuters and it really helps in a mass evacuation.
Of course, but how do we control this action item in the plan?
We.
And we don't.
We don't.
Control the transit, right?
Advocacy role. Um, so, you know, ask, ask your.
Is someone holding us, you know, accountable to improve the regional trend, tran- uh, transit? Because I'm not sure we can commit to that. Does anybody else have a comment?
Well, maybe we could get a plan with them in the mid, that they could, uh, buy into our plan if, if something happens and, uh, we can somehow have a contact person or they, they can. They can come and help us out as needed, but as long as it's discussed, I think.
But this verb suggests some action, right?
Well, the actual.
It doesn't say to explore, right?
But they actually could be, uh, that we have an agreement with them.
If we can get that agreement written.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
And then somebody has to take action.
The TJ PDC wrote this document, um, and they, you're right, they did as, they assigned some responsibility.
I, I feel like we had this discussion, I, I remember. Initially, when this was going on, and I feel like it was said that we have no control over that, so I'm not sure how that ended up under our action.
We, we, you're right, we intended to advocate, we could try to make a, a deal on it, um.
Well, could they change the verb here? To, you know. Explore or advocate rather than improve. Right, because that is a, the connotation of that verb is different, right?
That we own it, um.
Engage, because they had one.
Yeah, engage.
Over there, they had engaged something.
I. Even a. We will not be penalized if in five years John looks exactly the same as it does. Um, there, there's no, um, mitigation plan police running around on this. The, the, the best thing that this plan does is provide us a justification for things like grant applications to try to do this thing. Even like a marketing campaign about how to use the transit services that it have. If ridership in town is better five years from now. That would count as an improvement.
But it's still very specific for emergency evacuations, prevention and resiliency. So if I were an auditor coming in, I would say, well, that's very nice for community, however, it doesn't really relates, rel- relate to the topic enough.
Yeah, and we don't own a bus.
Right. Right. So. I think that, that verb either needs to be changed or, you know, if it's just a tick mark, why, I'm not sure it's why, why it's. But I understand the importance of it certainly.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Is it a possibility? They've made one change for us already, can they make that change for us?
Move it to, uh. Regionwide item, you know, the John's governance, it doesn't belong to any one party, so.
It can either be moved, moved to regional and, and this line item for us says advocate or something. Or you can strike it from there, it doesn't matter. But I do have a problem approving when I can't, when we don't control this particular resource.
That's fair.
Can I ask supervisor Price a question?
Sure, if she's willing to answer.
But I, I don't, I don't expect you to have the answer, but was lucky you do. Okay, um, we don't have a transit system. Does Alamo County have a similar plan or have they adopted a similar plan? And if so. Um, when it comes to evacuation. What type of transit do they use? In fact, could they use a school bus?
We do have an emergency operations plan, which I believe is the equivalent of your past regional hazard mitigation plan. Um, as your county administrator mentioned, this is a regional, um, not any individual locality. Um. And I don't know the specific answer to the county's response in this particular area. I do believe that the town can work with John to set up a process. By which if there is a need for evacuation, there can be some sort of a contractual or other, um. Audience for contractual arrangement with John. To help provide that, and I don't know if that addresses Councilor Morse, your concerns of the word. Improved, given that John is not under your jurisdiction, John is similarly not solely under the jurisdiction of all of our.
Right.
Now.
Right. Yeah, so we have no control, right? So whoever, wherever this line item appears, it would be the same issue. I mean, I think a school bus is, is a good idea, we have the, um, James River reeling and rafting. They have buses that we might be able to negotiate something, I mean, we do have options, but. This is, this is a big question.
We have an emergency evacuation plan.
It, it shows the, it shows the routes, you know, who, who knocks on what doors.
Right.
And it describes where they go, our emergency shelter is, um. The Scottsville Elementary School now. But the, um, mode of transport, so get your private vehicle if you can, or we did some transports in, um, emergency vehicles last time we did it. If you had to do hundreds of people, you know, put all the Scottsville apartment residents, they'd probably need a bus. So we get a bus on Shore River.
Several.
So let me ask this. To satisfy that improved. Could be something as simple as. Call it up, Ashley and saying. If we have to evacuate.
Yeah.
Could we use James River reeling and rafting button to do stuff?
So right.
And then, and then we have.
I'd want in writing, right? So we have some kind of MOU agreement with them, right?
But I mean.
That, that's a good way to give us, to give us accountability for this, so right now I have, um, on-call equipment rental contracts. If I need generators and pumps. I know who to call. I know where the warehouse is, we, we can get more generators and pumps. I don't, I don't have that for buses, so.
And I mention them because they are down where the action would be should flooding occur, right? So they might have to have a presence here to. Um, do something to, for their own business should something serious flooding.
Comfortable, I am comfortable with these. Because I, I think if we got in touch with John and said, hey, well, what do we need to do to get a contract with you to. Say that you'll help with it at evacuation and we call reeling and rafting and we maybe talk to. The school board and say, in case of an emergency, is there a way for us to, you know?
Yeah.
Have you see your school buses?
Cause they're going up to the school anyway.
Somebody is going to say, out of those three, somebody's going to say, yes, we'll get it in writing.
You gotta.
I, I like, I, I. Feel comfortable saying that.
I think the fire department. I think the fire department might have some, I know Jack Maxwell was doing a map on, on Fourth of July and evacuations and he said there were two places. So we might want to check with him or the fire department and find out what the, uh, what the plan is, because I think they've already created something.
Jack might already have this figured out.
Yeah.
Now we find agree as well, but if we push on in board work session. A line on work session will be three years out, maybe it's done, satisfied. But.
Well, the county of Alamo has a. Emergency evacuation plan that the town of Scottsville was a part of, I guess they still are. Uh, talked about, especially police at the time, I know. The volunteer issue was, I'm sure ACF boys got that covered. Does anything in, and you may not have the answer, but anything in that plan conflict with this regional plan? Or even down to. You know, proving Jack Maxwell's plan, which is quasar, I mean, oh.
I think they're okay, this, this doesn't get down to that level of operational detail. Um, I think it's a, it's a really good idea to have all those resources on call and. Here's three people you can talk to in an emergency to get buses, I think that suffices for. You don't have to be scratching your head thinking about who to call.
I think, I think our emergency management plan could use an update.
Yes, ma'am, here, thank you, Deputy Chief John O'Brandy of Alamo County Fire and Rescue was the principal point of contact. For our just approved emergency operations plan, so your town administrator could go to Deputy. County Executive Trevor Henry, who has oversight over fire and rescue. Um, to coordinate, um, some information sharing to help address the concerns that have been raised about that language in your.
I guess I'll look at the Lord in pre, meaning to me it says, if you don't have anything, anything to approve it.
We're calling you to, to evacuate people. You, me and the rest of the council, yeah, right, everybody.
Put that, approval of that resolution on hold for a while, is it correct?
Or is it, or is it ready to go as it is?
Or do you want to? Even if you vote on it, you might.
I have one other thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Apologize, we recently went through some revisions to the county's, um, emergency operation plan. And there were some concerns that I had over some drafting errors, formatting. But what I was informed of is that in the absence of having an approved plan, we were not eligible for federal reimbursement in the event of an, of an emergency. And with the weather emergencies we've been having. What ultimately led me to support approval of our plan is that it's better to have a plan approved and be eligible for that reimbursement. And then all, cause we can always come back and improve hours later rather than not having an improved plan. So I just offer that for your consideration in terms of this may be a similar situation. A plan is better than no plan and a plan can be improved later.
It's a good point, thank you.
So someone wanted to make a motion to review this resolution.
And we approve their resolution.
And this is a second. A second. Remove the second name, any further discussion?
I think what supervisor Price says is, is very wise, and just to be clear, if we vote for it. We could also, if we wanted to next week, adjust it, right, or just if we, I'm not saying we're trying to plan to adjust it next week, but. If we wanted to make some adjustments, we could do it in the near future.
I think I, I, I will follow up with the PDC staff about what. They meant with that verb and this discussion about what we might be willing to do, if they're expecting us to buy a bus, that's not likely to happen, so. Here's, here's what we think we mean by it. And, uh.
Are we comfortable approving before we have?
I think we ought to make sure we know what we're doing before we approve and then adjust, then we'd have to do it again, right? If we said, oh, we're going to adjust it, let's, uh, approve it this way.
Yeah, but I would. Uh. Supervisor, I say, if there is an emergency. Before we approve. If we, if we vote, if we vote, I think, I think we might have, or is that everything?
It does leave us at a risk.
Yeah.
Without having an approved plan.
If something happens next month.
If something happened, literally, we would probably down screen.
More information and then bring it up next slide, or.
Exactly, remove the second name, we accept this resolution, we call for the vote, this is part here.
Yes, uh, that's it. With Frisco?
Yeah.
Hines?
Yeah.
Tyson?
No.
Morse?
No.
Uh, Paige?
Yes.
Alright, passes four year.
That's, yeah, that's good. I was on the fence, so.
Uh, that's really, that's why I don't need Mr. Harrison, for yours.
Well, it's a, we, we didn't want to make this a closed session, so we'll make an open session, um. I'd like, if you were. Or I need to really kind of explain the procedure. Or hiring. And it should, and, and I just say right now, I don't think it should be anything to do with, uh, government service. They could assist a little bit, but, uh, as far as I've read, that town council is totally responsible for hiring. And, uh, it shouldn't be, uh, you know. Put out to somebody else, so. I, I'd like to know a couple of things, uh, mainly. What's the plan and what's the timeline and, and how's it gonna work and how the town council involved? And anyway, so those are some of my questions.
Mr. Man, do you want to say something?
Several, several years ago, when I was on the administration, we had, uh, part left, we. Done the services, interviewed the candidates, government services, collected the best choice and then we were able to bounce all the work on.
So you don't have precedent, okay.
What's happening in this case is we had, what, ten applicants?
We do ten, that's good enough.
Council, or council person, mayor's subcommittee is looking through and talking to them and coming up with a list, rating them as to what they think are the top. On down this, and they will turn that over within the four government services committees, look at this, and then we got the third committee. And then the fourth council and council could have their interviews.
So there's two interviews, you said?
Yeah.
There's gonna be a government service. And there's gonna be.
They're trying to kind of use this. That they know. Then they will pass them on and then eventually we'll be council and we'll show them what we're doing.
So is that ten gonna be little down to two, is it gonna be little down to?
We don't have, we don't have a number, it's really. But when the position was posted, it said that all resumes will be reviewed by the twenty-third. So we have not opened a single resume to date. Somebody may have cursory looked through it, but me personally, because that posting says we will not look at them till the twenty-third. It is not our approach to look at them. We have a kickoff meeting tomorrow at two P M, it's a Zoom session, uh, which, um. Javier graciously said he would set up for us. We are going to look at what our process is. And then look at the criteria for selecting the final set of candidates. Could be two, could be five, could be all nine, we don't know yet, right? If all of those are qualified, then we may want to speak to all of them. I doubt they're, they're all super qualified. In the posting, there was a criteria set that we posted for the initial. Review, so we will probably stick somewhat to that criteria set. Now, I've been collecting criteria, there are other soft criteria and things that people have brought to me. To put perhaps in an in-person interview on things to look for. But I spoke to, a- and I applaud the mayor for putting this group together, it's myself, Laura Malusi and Stotz Reo. And I think there's enough experience, I spoke to Laura in person over the weekend for the first time. She seems very dedicated to an open transparent process. She seems very well-versed in the requirements of a hiring process. And I am very confident that, uh, this subcommittee will be able to put forth. The best candidates for consideration. Now, if you all want them to go to government services first, that's fine, they could just come to the council for interview. We also talked about having them, uh, not as a formal voting, but just, uh. As a courtesy to the staff who would be working for or with these people. To do a meet and greet and, you know, give their impression as well as feedback to the final selection, so that. In the final selections, you should have. What was the first cut that they met, what was the second cut that they met? And then what were the impressions of existing staff? Um, all of that for your consideration to vote final on. I would think that list would probably get down to three or four, that's my inclination.
This is a solid. Then it would be probably, we never seen before, five, it's committee, it goes to committee, uh. Maybe you can do what you want to do, you can say, let's send it on down council.
Yeah.
Or how do we look at this closer, uh, you know?
It's perfectly fine, however you want to do it.
Well, I think, uh, I've already set my input, so we need anybody's input of what they're looking for in an employee, so that's, it's just not, uh, a few people. And, uh. What, what particular criteria are you looking for that would make the job? We're not probably gonna get a study as knowledgeable as that, but we can get some other characteristics and qualities that, that would work for our town, so we need that input. The other thing is, uh. Uh. It goes to the government service, so that means that I, I. As long as it, I guess it's Eddie and I, we're just gonna see him twice, we'll see him at the government service. And we'll see him at the, at the town council, and so I, I feel like we're doing a double, double there.
Yeah, you do.
Right, we don't have to do. We might not do that, maybe.
If you trust the committee, we can let you know who the finals are.
We might let the other.
With every video. You will see everything.
Or that, we can look at it, but maybe not vote, I don't know, maybe we wouldn't do that.
Just a quick question, so. When the job description was posted. Are you saying?
No, the job description set, it was the, uh, the advertisement was a little different. But the jobs, we have a job description for the position.
I guess what I'm asking is, the people who apply for.
Right.
That, what that is, you're, you're not saying you're gonna be changing.
No, no, no.
Yeah, so the other thing I was gonna say is. Having been through this process several times before, this does sound like a very thorough process and I think that's helpful, you know, it's, it's an important. Position of the town and it is good to figure out. What number of qualified candidates we have, and then once we have determined that through this subsequent process. Then you would bring them to whatever they are in the council and we interview and see where we are then.
Uh, and just as we described in the R F P, the competitive selection process. We would have the same rationale available to you for why these candidates were put forth, why the other ones were not put forth. That will be completely transparent to you.
And the April date is. The cutoff date for applications and then the resume.
March.
March was.
March twenty-third, that's this.
We need to get going.
So that's why we're kicking off with the process and criteria. We will start looking through the resume sets on the twenty-third, once we get them. I do not expect this hiring to take us into May. We're committed to, to having at least a three-week overlap with the. With, uh, our current town administrator that gives them enough transition time, that's the goal.
The only thing is, is, uh. A problem if you, if you make a decision, say. Equal thirteen. That person may not be available until.
That is true.
Fifteen. And then we lose that, so I, I think that has to be a criteria too, say, when are you available? And, and we need to know who they are available and that might be part of, uh, the hiring process, if you're not available for that transition.
I, I'm not sure I agree, it is the council's decision. But let me put it this way, would the council be willing to take a less qualified candidate that was available earlier? Than having a more qualified candidate who was available somewhat later? That's the trade-off.
Right, there's a, right.
Especially if someone has to move.
Yeah.
Exactly.
If you're in a job where you can give two weeks notice, great. But if it's. If the professional requirements are for more notice or if they have to move, but you can't get there, and then you're just looking at.
And we can't control that.
And we can, we can be in touch and I'm, I'll be professionally courteous in sharing all my files and helping with onboarding. Uh, but, uh, you know, we do the best we can with the, with the time we have.
So, so you'll have those to the government service by then?
Um, well, I'd like to ask the indulgence that we have our kickoff meeting first, but I, I suspect the first cut will probably be available sometime late next week.
Okay, okay, so, so we might need to have a special government service meeting to, uh. Get that taken care of.
If you want to review it at the government services, then let me know as soon as possible, because it's an extra step in the process.
You should just go straight to town council? Maybe we should.
I. I don't see the need to go through since you and Eddie are sitting here. I will forward all the information to you, if you want to share it with government services, please do, this is an open, transparent.
But I think.
Process.
Right, but I, I, I think since we're under the timeline, I think just sort of. Town council, maybe we could have a special meeting to.
That was my initial thought, to just take it directly to town council because of the.
And that, that, that does involve two sort of interview steps, and that's what I went through, it was a phone interview first with a team that included. One council member and a panel of volunteers. And then I came in person for a post-session, in-person interview with the full council.
Right, and that's probably what we'll do with the shortlist. That we'll probably speak to them in committee first. And then make sure that those candidates, however many they are, are suitable to come to the council for consideration.
Okay. I don't know how many cuts were along the way.
But I'll know more when I talk to the group tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's any changes that are significant, I will communicate via, uh, the town email to all of you.
Regardless, I, I'd like the town council to see every resume and everything, just so, let's double check that way. Cause I was in that committee. The last time and we didn't see them all, and I think that was a mistake. So I think that, that all should be seen by us, but they could be selective, and just in case there's a, uh, somebody said, wait a minute, you missed this.
I haven't asked Mr. Lawless specifically if we've gotten all of the applications and he assured me that yes, we do.
Yeah.
So, nobody's been.
Right, no.
It's my, it's not my understanding that anybody has been left off of the application list that, of the nine that we have so far.
Right, but I mean, what I'm saying, you, you guys are probably gonna weed them out a little bit too, right?
Yeah, and we can send forth the nine.
Right, that's right.
And again, like I said, I, I will tell you why. Let's say. Three of the nine make the final cut, I, I will be transparent about the six and the rationale why they did not make the cut.
Right.
And then you can decide, well, maybe this is somebody that we really want to talk to.
Yeah.
If that's the decision of the council, then so be it, add a fourth, right, in that, in that scenario, I, I have no issue with that.
Good.
Okay, anything else, folks?
Uh, just a, just a heads up, we're good next, uh, meeting, uh. Well, our government service, we're gonna be looking at the charter committees. New committees, new roles and new liaisons, and we can, we can decide on that the next meeting about. Who, and, and maybe officially confirm Alex is a liaison and, uh. And, and Ali and I have talked, talked about having, um, co-liaisons.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially to have, uh, so that, uh, that, well, that's their recommendation, so that if someone can't make a meeting.
I think all of this should be discussed in a larger context, and I think we committed to that. Um, earlier, right?
Yeah.
Is that right?
But we, I mean, we do it.
So that is on the agenda for the work, for the work session, correct? Alright. Um, if I could just make one final note, back to the hazard mitigation plan. Just please realize that this mitigation plan only covers natural disasters. Okay, so if East Palestine has taught us anything, there are more risks that we have as a town beyond natural hazards. Not that that emergency management plan would not be necessarily the same. But that, that is not covered under this particular set of actions.
Okay, anybody else? Supervisor Price, thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the public for being with us. Motion to adjourn. For a second.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Thank you.